Thank you and welcome to the March 27, 2019 meeting of the Milton School Committee as well as our open budget hearing, as is our tradition. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 38N of the Massachusetts General Laws, we are required to have an open budget form once a year, and this is it. So I will call the annual budget hearing and form the new public schools to order. Speaking of wearing many hats, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs is currently at a traffic meeting on our behalf. So I will run us through the presentation, and then we're happy to take any questions from the public if there are, unless of course, the Finance Subcommittee would like to run the presentation.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Next slide, please. So our fiscal year 2020 budget we presented to the Warrant Committee in late November, we requested an additional approximately $2.3 million over the fiscal '19 budget, broken down as follows: approximately $1.4 additional million dollars for rollover of existing staff and expenses, just shy of $300,000 for additional staffing based on increasing enrollment, $150,000 additional for new special education and other support positions, and approximately $500,000 in non-personnel spending. As you can see from the slide, those were funded to varying degrees. Next slide, please. So the initial $1.4 million additional over our budget for last year that was required to rollover existing staff was funded completely. The additional staffing needs, the approximately $290,000 of additional funding, was to go for two elementary classroom teachers, two high school classroom teachers, and additional recess aids at each of the elementary schools. We received funding for the elementary school classroom teachers but not for the high school classroom teachers or for the additional recess aids. Thank you. For new programming, we had identified through our Director of Puber Personnel some potential gains, keeping some special education students in district or creating a program that would be language-based at the middle school level. Unfortunately, that required at least two FTEs which were not funded in the upcoming budget. And despite our best efforts once again to see the Milton High School Transition Program funded in its entirety, that was not funded as well for the fiscal year 2020. Thank you. Unfortunately, we were, even with our additional requests scaled back, that was not sufficient to bring the budget as it is currently projected into balance. We were asked to make additional cuts by the Warrant Committee. So the additional cuts that we made, we made some administrative cuts, and we made various funding cuts throughout the different levels in the district. So at the elementary level, we eliminated a technology teacher. At the middle school level, we did partial cutbacks in the number of elective positions, which for those who are familiar with the budgeting and process will likely mean that we will unfortunately lose those gifted teachers as we repost those positions from point ones to point eights. At the high school level, we will be reducing the number of clubs and activities by approximately a third. And then at the administrative level, we have cut back some part-time staff. And that was how we were able to bring the budget into alignment for this upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. Thank you. So final slide here of our brief presentation. Our initial request for the fiscal year 20 budget was approximately $52 million. The current recommendation as it stands is just under $51 million. So the delta between those two numbers is slightly over $1 million between what we requested and what is currently being recommended in the budget. So that concludes our very brief presentation. It's a lot of work went into crafting the budget, and I'd like to again extend our thanks to our Finance Subcommittee and our Town Warrant Committee and our colleagues on the Select Board who worked with us to, yep, to make this budget a reality and endure as little pain as possible. We're happy to take any questions from the public if there are any questions regarding our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Please, please come up, use the microphone, and if you could give us your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Ross Denny of 107 Columbine Road. I was very excited when the override passed to support the public schools. But never did I believe that that was going to be only enough funding for one year. And I'm making the assumption, I would love this clarification, if there's ever the possibility of planning out three years and planning for an override that would cover that, so that when we do have sufficient funds to do some of the great work that was done, it's not cut the next year. It makes it look as though we didn't anticipate that this would happen, but we all know there's going to be an increase in teacher contracts because of the, I'm sure there's some sort of cost of living in their, whatever their compensation should be. But I'm concerned that how does, how do we do this differently in the out years so that as we build it, whatever the override is, covers enough time that we can sustain really good programs that we're about to lose?
Thank you. I think that's a, that's an excellent statement. I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to address it.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Verella.
Yeah, I would. So, so the thing, the thing is, and I know that you're coming here tonight as, as school parents from the K-12 district, but, and some of you follow town, town meeting, town politics, the Warrant Committee budget building. Some, some of you may not. But as Dr. Donahue said, we're charged, you know, we're charged with only a certain amount of money. You saw that, how much we asked for, for what the needs were going forward, right? And then when you also have an override, okay, so you have to understand that we don't set the amount of money that's on the override, the School Committee doesn't, right? It's, it's the Warrant Committee and the, and the Strong Town Administrator and the Select Board that okay the amount of money that is on, that, that we went out for the override in 2016, passed in 2016. So one of the things, I'm really glad you are all here tonight and speaking, but I also want to let you know that you also need to speak these concerns to the Warrant Committee and to the Select Board, because they really have the overall control over how much money can be allocated to us. And, you know, if we, if, if we, if we get money, then it's got to be taken from someplace else in town, DPW or FIRE or Police. So, you know, it's the whole town budget. We are always, as you know, we are the largest budget because we have the most employees. So we're always going to be the biggest budget, and sometimes we take more cuts than anybody else because of that. But I just want to let you know that as far as the planning goes, it's, it's an excellent point to bring up, but you need to bring it up at, I strongly advise that you bring it up to the Select Board and to the Warrant Committee as well, so that, that you as concerned citizen are relaying to the people that really have the overarching power on the budget and the money that you want more, so that more cuts don't happen. So I just want to put that out there, if that makes sense.
Any other colleagues? Member White.
I just want to say that every year when we are looking at an override, it is the Board of, it is the Select Board that makes the decision about how much money they're going to ask for in an override. And it's, it's always a political decision about what do they think will pass, not necessarily about what we really need. And then the following year after the override, the money goes back to the general fund, so it doesn't stay with the schools as, as you might think. It goes to the general fund and then gets redistributed. So the, Mr. Debeke, who was the Town Administrator, he told us that he wanted the cuts to go 65-35, because 65% of the town budget is the schools and 35% is the other departments in the town. And that includes the cost of health insurance and other non-direct costs. So that's how he made that determination.
Anyone else? Please, please come up and give your address. And while you're doing that, I'll, I'll say that, thank you. I think that's a very constructive comment and criticism. And I'd like to thank you for providing it to us. It helps us, the next time we do have an override, be able to articulate that to the other stakeholders in the process, that, you know, obviously, we advocate for the school, but it's, it's, it's helpful too when we get feedback as well, that's not only are you getting our considered opinion as a board, but this is what our constituents have said. So, so please listen to them via us as well. So thank you.
Hi, Linda Vancini, Hillcrest Road. This might piggyback on the last question. I'm just wondering, rather than cutting or overrides, and maybe the town has already done this, has there been any planning or ability to seek possibly low-interest loans so that you don't lose, and then you create the programs that actually bring kids back to the district and prevent kids from having to go out of the district because there aren't programs in place?
So that's, that's an excellent question. I'm, I, I think that we are, we are to an extent constrained in what we can spend borrowed money on, but I will get the specifics regarding that and make sure that I give them to you in terms of whether or not we could take out loans to pay for operational costs. That said, it, you, you do, at a certain point, hit a tipping point where you, you end up adding to your interest burden to pay for those loans, and that eats into your operational abilities as a result. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting thought about trying to close the budget gap, especially in the short term.
Have we ever done that?
We have, we have, I don't believe that we've taken out loans to pay for operational costs. We have tried to get creative with funding sources in terms of our, some of our other funding sources. I know that the Selectmen looked into taking our, our Chapter 90 money, which is the road, the money that we have for, for road construction, and using that as a principal payment for a, a large-term loan. I don't believe we were allowed to do that. The Commonwealth didn't let us do that. But, but they have looked, tried to look at creative ways to, to increase the, the income stream in town. Thank you. I don't know if anyone else has other comments.
Member White, you were on the Warrant Committee. Did, they had, had they ever done anything like that in the years you've been on it?
You know, Glenn could answer that question. I'd rather wait to defer to him, because I don't know if it's, I don't, if the law allows you to take a loan.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I don't, I don't think it's the law allows it, but he would know.
Not 100% sure. I've never heard of that being done, so.
Yeah.
And we've certainly borrowed money for the school building project, and we're still paying for that, but that's different than operations budget.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there's one more.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Karen Friedman Hanna, 3 Norway Road and Precinct 2 Town Meeting Member. I come tonight as a precinct town meeting member rather than the parent of one of your music teachers, so full disclosure to anybody. And I'm just so concerned about what the reduction in number of hours for the specialists is, especially at the middle school level, because I know the classes for those specialties are already enormous. And I also know from my own kids, having gone through the programs, how challenging middle school is to begin with for students. And when they don't have the outlets of the things that are maybe the more passionate things for them rather than the required things for them, you face many, many more challenges in behavior, many reductions in performance, in other things. I was the advocate, I was the president of fame for six or seven years. I spoke many, many times about the importance of music education and the arts in how it relates to all other factors of learning and how it improves behavior, how it improves language, how it improves math skills, how it improves all the academic classes. And so the idea of reducing them so that not only are the kids getting less of it, but the quality of what they'll be getting is dramatically reduced by having so many more kids. And I don't know how that can be qualified and quantified as being an okay thing. I understand that, that there are subject classes that have to remain in place, but those electives are equally important in the overall learning of what our kids are being provided. And I'll tell you, my own two kids were top students academically, but it was those classes, the music in particular, that drove them to wanting to come to school every day, especially in middle school, but throughout their career. And it helped them to excel. So I know I'm speaking to the choir, so to speak. I know that you all understand this, but I can't understand how it's looked at as being okay under any circumstance. So I will go to the Board of Selectmen and to the Warrant Committee and speak my mind, but my kids have been through it already. I just am so distraught over this that we're still trying to overcome these issues so many years after we dealt with this so many years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
Anyone else? So Dr. Pavelcheck, welcome. Thank you for representing us at the, at the traffic.
Glad you got back.
Glad Traffic let you get back. There was a question earlier, I don't know if you may have heard part of it on your way in, about, I'm paraphrasing here, and I apologize if I misparaphrase, about borrowing to, the town borrowing to cover operational costs, and whether or not that was a strategy that had been pursued or is permissible, i.e. our, our operational costs are off by about $2 million this year. Is it permissible to look for a way to find a loan?
A low-interest, you'd say?
A low-interest loan to cover that, that gap or that delta.
Glenn's like.
I'm.
Half of.
Not 100% sure, but I'd say 95% no. The, the requirements of balancing the budget for the town allow you to borrow against anticipated revenue and some other things like that, but to just borrow for operational to close a gap, at the very least, the bonding companies would look askance. Whether it's even legally permissible, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. And, and for those in the audience that, you know, as much time and energy we, as we focus on certain aspects of the town, how the bonding companies view the town is, is a topic of considerable time that the Selectmen, on, lays on the Selectmen's minds. So, Select Board, the Board of Select, Select Board. So that is a salient point. So with that, if there are no further comments, I'm going to move to adjourn our hearing on the budget.
So move.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? All right. So our, our hearing on the budget is adjourned, and our call to order, our School Committee meeting. I, I do not have any further changes to the agenda. I don't know if anyone else does.
I do, I'm 38.
No.
I, I don't know if under policy we have to add reapproval of the IHBG homeschooling policy that we just approved. I'll explain at that moment.
We will add that. So would that be a, that would be a first reading of a reapproval?
Um, I think it will just be, yeah, reapproved. It's, I can explain the policy.
So that's reapproval of policy IHBG?
IHBG, correct.
For those taking notes at home. Okay.
Okay.
That's complicated. You were there.
Okay. So make sure that is on there, under the, under the policy report. Good. Citizens speak. Is anyone here for citizens speak? Okay, wonderful. Superintendent.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Hi, my name is Gillian Mead, and I live at 52 Gulliver Street. So I am here to read a letter on behalf of the Abutters in the Gulliver, Elm and Wendell Park neighborhood. So it was a letter that was compiled by about 30 residents.
Okay.
Dear School Committee, thank you for meeting with us, the Milton High School Abutters, and the concerned neighbors regarding on residing on Gulliver, Elm and Wendell Park Streets on March 7th to discuss your plan to build an early education center in the area between Gulliver Street and the back of the Field House. To be clear, we all support the Milton Public School Education Program. In fact, many of us have voted for budget overrides in the past, even before we were parents. But our support is not blind. We have serious concerns about the currently proposed plans and rushed timelines. In response to the questions and concerns asked of the School Committee on March 7th, we heard you say several things. One, an early education center may not be the best educational plan for Milton students. Two, an early education center may not best serve the town of Milton when asked if this was the best long-term solution. Details such as property line setbacks and traffic studies on the elementary school needs study were not fully completed due to a lack of funding. Four, as a group, the School Committee members were unclear of the process going forward. As a group, there was uncertainty about what the appointed school building committee charge was, and there seemed to be a lack of clear understanding of whether the building committee would be authorized to consider other options or sites. Six, the exact language was taken from the old school building committee document. There was a lack of acknowledgement that there were members, excuse me, acknowledged current school-owned property and not any other town or state-owned land. Eight, the reason that a new K through 5 school would not be an option was because five acres of land would be necessary, yet a building the size of Tucker is suitable to build on a plot of land that is only one acre in size. Nine, that there is an understanding that traffic is a neighborhood concern and that the gate on Channing Road is and will remain for emergency egress only. And lastly, 10, the Glover School option had safety issues and could not support expansion, but the early education center at the high school needed the building committee to conduct a traffic study. The concerns and questions of the neighborhood organizations are as follows. Given that the report was only issued on January 2019, and many questions are unanswered or have contradicting answers, why are we fast-tracking this process? Number two, given that the kindergarten population spikes next year but then drops back down to current enrollment levels the following year, why are we ruling out more temporary short-term options? Again, why are we fast-tracking the process? Three, given that we haven't decided on what the best option is for the students of Milton, why is the building committee formed and why are we fast-tracking the process? Four, if Milton Public is concerned about losing 1,000 students per year to private school, why would we devalue our flagship high school by adding a non-conventional early education center to the back of it that would still not provide the facilities necessary? To date, no one that provided their names or email addresses at the Abutters meeting have been provided clarity to the questions that couldn't be answered by the School Committee during the March 7th meeting. What are the School Committee's next steps? Are you going to vote on any of the options and make a recommendation to the building committee? Is there any consideration of exploring the feasibility of the 444 plan that was proposed in the March Select Board meeting? And why aren't the school meeting and Select Board members working together? As taxpayers, residents, parents, and proud citizens of Milton, we are deeply concerned about the School Committee's rush to push forward on a long-term plan as a short-term project. This is not the best we can do for our children, not for our grade-A school system. We can do better, and we must do better. Signed, the concerned citizens of Gulliver, Wendell and Elm. We have copies of the letters that we'd like to provide, signed by the neighborhood.
That'd be great.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if you'd be kind enough to send us electronic copies, that would be wonderful.
Thanks.
I'll remind my colleagues and you that I appreciate your engagement here, but our, our policies preclude a, a, a back-and-forth dialogue at this point. So at this point, I'll, I'll simply say thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else here for citizens speak? Wonderful. Then with that, Superintendent, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Donahue. I'd like to ask in the audience, we were going to have a Milton Foundation for Education representative attend tonight. They have an executive meeting, but they were going to send a representative to speak to celebration, perhaps.
I'll speak. Oh, Betty, you and I can speak, right?
Would you speak?
I can speak. You want me to speak or you want to speak?
Go ahead.
All right. So the Celebration for Education is on April 6th. It's a Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but the following, at Lombardo's. I do not, I think it starts around 6:00, 6:30. For so many years, I was on the board, so I just showed up at 8:00 in the morning and just stayed until the end of the night. This year, it is the, I think the name of the celebration is Beyond Libraries or Beyond the Books. And it's about innovative library space use, and a lot of that having to do with Makerspaces, which I think is fantastic. I'm currently enrolled in a graduate certificate program at Tufts on early childhood technology, and involves a lot about Makerspaces. And so I think this is a great initiative. And so I hope that if you haven't bought the ticket, you can still buy them. You can go to MiltonFoundationForEducation.org and purchase the tickets. It's a very fun night. There's our silent auction, there's a Jeep raffle. I don't know if there's any tickets left for the Jeep raffle.
Yes. Yeah. Letty Sutter was selling them this weekend at the basketball games at the Field House at the high school. So I know that there are some at least left, and they're only selling 500. So your chances of winning a Jeep or $25,000 are 1 in 500, it seems like, a better, a better chance than the Powerball.
Anyway, it's a great night to celebrate education. The foundation has done a lot of wonderful things for the town. They were involved with the Copeland Foundation on funding the wireless initiative in the town, and then also a lot of our technology initiatives. So I encourage you to attend if you can, and if not, you can always make a donation to the foundation. So.
And I just want to say that even the, tonight in the Torah Pear School, Dr. Spalding pointed out how many of the special areas were funded by grants from the MFP. So they do great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite to the table Principal Dr. Karen Spalding, along with students in the eighth grade who have a very exciting community service project. You might have met these students anywhere around Milton at a public event that you've gone to or attended. And we asked them tonight to come to the School Committee to be recognized. And so I'm going to leave introductions up to Dr. Spalding.
You can turn that off. Oh, no, they need it.
Yeah.
Never mind, never mind.
Okay.
So I have with me here four eighth-grade students. They have been, so Emily, Claire, Hyen, and Kira to my right. And they have been participating, the eighth graders have been learning about civics. And being an active member of our very important democracy, they've been learning all about voting. And they, because their teachers took part in a special, we received a grant last year, a service learning grant. And so we had teachers who went and participated in professional development to learn about service learning. And so from that civics unit, developed a service learning project. And our eighth graders, if you have not yet, or if they have not yet engaged you about voting either at the local store or at the public library, then I am shocked because they have been canvassing the town. Not just these four that you see here, but about 300 of them. So if you have not heard about their voting initiatives, they are here to tell you about them right now.
Just pass the mic along so people from home can hear you.
Just pass the mic along so people from home can hear you.
So we're just going to reintroduce ourselves, so I'm Emily Gallagher.
I'm Claire Graham.
I'm Kira Walsh.
I'm Hyen Nuyen.
And as Dr. Spalding already said, we're eighth graders in Pierce Middle School and social studies are doing a service learning project to raise voter turnout at like Milton's annual town elections. And local elections are easy to like not go and vote and think they're not important, but they have like a lot to do with every day. And, um, because it's like important to know where your tax money goes to and like who's going to make decisions about your child's education.
These things are controlled by the people you vote for in annual local elections. We believe that voting in annual, in local election is a critical part of being involved and informed citizens. And we remind, we remind you to continue or start voting in local elections and make a difference where you, you'll feel its biggest impact.
Considering the fact that you're all here tonight, it's pretty safe to assume that the majority of you are already involved citizens doing your part in the community. This is why we would like you to, like to ask you to do one more thing for us. Besides just voting this April thirtieth, help us spread the word about Milton's two thousand nineteen annual election. Last year, only twenty-one point eight percent of Milton residents voted in the annual town election. Let's make sure that number changes this year.
So to accomplish this, we have created flyers with the necessary information about voting in local elections. We will be leaving these flyers downstairs at the table when you walk in and we ask that you not only take one for yourself, but also take some extra ones to pass out to family, neighbors, and friends. This will help us get the word out about local elections and make sure that people know when, where, why, and how to vote. Thank you for doing your part as a citizen in Milton and helping us encourage local voting.
Bravo.
Thank you.
How much do I love this?
Police member.
Okay, so I have lived here for seventeen years and I can't say enough about how much I, I love the fact that you are taking this charge because there are so many very, very highly intelligent people that live in this town that don't know anything about local politics. And it's, like you say, it's so important, like tonight, right? About the money, where your schools go, your trash being picked up. And a lot of people have you asked, you know, who, members of their select board or who's on their school committee, they couldn't tell you because they're so busy and they, not as many of them take the time to vote locally. So I, I have been preaching this for like fifteen years and I think it is so great that these young, strong women are, are preaching this. It's excellence and I hope it's a big success because it's desperately needed for people to pay attention to local government. Bravo.
Thank you.
You're rocking it, I love it, love it.
I just also want, wanted to thank Town Administrator Donahue as well as Madam Clerk Galvin who came to last Friday and met with about eighteen eighth graders and talked to them about local politics and the voting process and what they do to engage citizens in the, in voting. And two of our history teachers are actually here, Mr. Smith and Ms. A is way in the back, maybe hiding. There she is. So want to thank them as well as Mr. Mack, our third eighth-grade history teacher, for taking on this important topic. It's been a shift in the history standards and they have been well ahead of the curve. And then adding this service learning piece has been really fun to watch. And so I want to thank the four of you as well as all of the eighth graders who have been working on it.
If I might, a lot of people might talk about voting and getting to vote out, but I can testify that these eighth graders came to, I think, a kindergarten information night, a first grade information night. I said when we began at six-thirty, well, you've seen everyone, you can go home. No, we're going to stay till the end and we're going to approach every parent leaving that. So you're out of public events and you're learning about it, but you're doing it. Congratulations and thank you.
I just had one final question. Dr. Spalding, did you write and secure this grant?
Yes.
Okay, I just want everyone here to know that, and everybody watching, that Dr. Spalding is sort of the Captain Marvel of grant writing and securing. And so in spite of the numbers that you saw on the screen earlier with the, the budget for fiscal year twenty, it's hard work like that. And you, I, I don't know how many grants you've, you've gotten in the time that I've been here, but I feel like it's just one after the other, after the other. And in spite of these cuts that none of us want to have to make, we are able to fund really great, important projects like this because of that extra hard work you do. So thank you very much for doing it.
So I'll, I'll add my two cents. So I personally find the, our town meeting form of government is, is very near and dear to my heart. It's, it's, it's a little anachronistic and it's, it's very formal and it's a beautiful, wonderful thing. And I would, I'd like to thank you for helping maintain it. It's, it's, it's truly democracy in action. It's, it's the, as, as close to the streets as you can get and it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I, I hope, I hope you all register to vote in a few years and I look forward to seeing you on the floor of town meeting before you, you scatter to the winds in college or wherever. So, thank you.
Yeah. Can I just add one thing? There's a, there's a proposal to let sixteen-year-olds vote that's making some national headlines and I was going to just say that you four ladies, if you were sixteen, I would applaud you being voters at age sixteen. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to invite the Pierce Middle School Site Council to the table for their presentation.
Excuse me?
You don't want to be on my list, just saying. Those kids are amazing. I always feel so inadequate.
I had Emily.
Whenever the kids are, you always feel so inadequate.
I should have done more.
Yeah, I should have done more.
What?
I should have done more. They're, you feel inadequate with these kids, you know, they're like so involved.
See, I did, I, I wasn't, I've been in student government since I was in the book school.
You were then.
I was then.
I'll turn it over to you in introductions.
Sorry for the tight.
It's tight quarters here. You're like in a dorm room or something, but.
Sorry.
So this is the Night of Pierce.
This is the Pierce night.
This absolutely is and it's been a lot of fun and a lot of excitement. So we want to share with you, we had the opportunity to share with some of you the mosaic down in the lobby. So thank you for attending, if you were able to do that, as well as, as the tour. And we will share now some information about some of our goals and, and how we've been working towards those goals. So this is our Site Council. We have some of those members here tonight. We have some additional folks with us here as well, Mr. Smith and Ms. Mendoza. But we will have folks introduce themselves individually as they participate in the presentation, most of which they are doing and I am not doing, which is fun as well. So that is a sketch. If you missed our mosaic on the way in, I don't know how you did, but if you did, there is a sketch of it. And it is in there because it really does represent what we are all about here at Pierce Middle School. So I'm going to read, I apologize, I don't usually do this in PowerPoints, but I think this is important. So I am going to read out loud the Pierce Middle School mission statement because again, it really does speak to what is important to us here at Pierce. At the Pierce Middle School, we are dedicated to nurturing our students to become positive contributors to society, to be people who think independently and creatively, who are resilient and know how to solve problems, who appreciate diversity and are open, willing, and ready to collaborate with those around them. We are committed to fostering in these very important students a genuine sense of curiosity, joy of learning, and strength of character that will guide them to make positive and healthy decisions for themselves and others now and throughout their lives. So I do apologize for putting this slide in here. It is not intended, well, maybe a little bit to brag about the work that's happening at Pierce Middle School. But that slide is in there because the kinds of grants that we seek out, the kinds of special initiatives that we seek out are very well-aligned to our mission statement. And it's about supporting the whole child. It's about fostering and supporting teacher professional development and really giving students experiences that will not only teach them how to read and write and do science and math because those are important things, but also develop in them those habits of mind and those critical thinking skills and really supporting and fostering and helping them grow as the amazing young people that they are. I'm going to hand it over to Jake Smith.
Good evening. I'm Jake Smith. I'm an eighth-grade social studies teacher here at the Pierce Middle School and I'm just going to talk to you guys about technology. In this world that we live in now, you know, technology is becoming such an integral part of everything that we do. And one of our goals here is to improve technology at the Pierce Middle School. So it reads, you know, "We comprehensively integrate technology and foster a digital-age learning culture that provides a rigorous, relevant, and engaging education for all students." And there are so many things that we do here, you know, involving technology. I could, you know, go on for a really long time, but Dr. Spalding told me that I couldn't. So I'm just going to, you know, one of the things that we're hoping to pilot this year is an interactive video series where parents will actually be able to access videos that teachers put online, you know, teachers, namely myself, videos demonstrating some of the technology that we use such as Google Classroom, Google Read and Write. It's really a way for teachers who maybe aren't able to, you know, attend a back-to-school night or something like that. So they're able to access those technologies that are really so helpful and really, really important in the learning that we're doing here at the Pierce Middle School.
We've also been spending a lot of time preparing for a one-to-one initiative and our, we have a great team of folks who have been visiting other schools, have been really sort of peeling back the layers of, of preparing for that and we've, we've learned a lot. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, the range of technology use is really inspiring in the building and folks have really embraced it as a tool and as a tool that can be used for learning, whether it's personalizing learning, whether it's using simulations, whether it's analyzing data, whatever the case may be. But the, the teachers in this building have really done an amazing job of really pushing themselves. Oftentimes, the children come in knowing more about technology than the grownups who are in front of them and it's, it's a bit of a risk-taking adventure. And they have really embraced that and done that work, which has been really inspiring and enriching for students.
Thank you. I'm Kristin Frain. I'm an eighth-grade science teacher here at Pierce Middle School and I'm going to talk about goal number two. It reads, "To provide appropriate targeted interventions and instructional practices that increase student learning growth and achievement, both for students who are less than proficient in math, E L A, and science and technology and engineering and for those who are proficient." I think we could probably talk for hours on all of the things that are going on here, like Mr. Smith said, but a few of us are going to take turns explaining some of the things that we're working on. Mr. Smith and I are also a part of an administrative program at Curry College and so one of the things that we've been working on together is working with teachers, paraprofessionals, and parents in the district to work on better defining the role of the paraprofessional for everybody involved in the process. So it started out as a P L C, a professional learning community within our school and we were meeting with teachers and paraprofessionals to start to better outline the relationship and, and provide guidelines for teachers as they're working through that and paraprofessionals also. And we got to a place where we were actually able to make some one-page documents to help clarify both for training purposes, but also for parents who are new to the special education process whose student might be matched up with a paraprofessional for the first time. So we created three documents, one to outline the paraprofessional-teacher relationship, one for the paraprofessional-student relationship, and then one also for the paraprofessional-parent relationship. And just last week, I had some really fascinating conversations with parents who have just been through this process and they reviewed these documents and provided really helpful feedback. And I think it was, I think it will be a really powerful tool as we move forward into the next school year to be able to provide these to parents going through that process and for paraprofessionals who are getting assigned.
Thank you. I'm Mike Cleary, seventh-grade social studies teacher. And I'm just going to talk real quick about Revision Assistant, which is a writing program that's really challenging kids to really push themselves. And, and what pushes them is the instant feedback. So as they're writing, say, a persuasive piece in social studies class, they can instantly check to see, how am I doing? And I had mentioned this to Dr. Spalding that, you know, I would have gotten that first rough draft, you know, done. I have X amount of words, but now because they're getting that instant, instant feedback, maybe you want to clarify a little more, maybe you want to cite a source. And it steers them. And what I'm seeing is when we do like a, just any writing piece, they're pulling some of that same kind of foundation from the program into their just, you know, drop, just a writing assignment. So we're starting to see it build outside of the actual program itself. It runs on some sort of algorithm that I'm not really, not savvy, exactly. Thank you.
I'm Renee Mendoza, seventh-grade math teacher at Pierce. And so one of the strategies we've implemented to help students become stronger with math is number talks. And these number talks are five to fifteen-minute conversations around purposefully crafted problems that are solved mentally. So no one gets to write, they don't get a pencil, we get to talk about them. And the reason for them and what they help the students with is they help them visualize problem-solving. They help them build a stronger number sense, they help them become more fluent, and they help them see a variety of strategies so that they can become more flexible and not think, oh, there's only one way to do this. No, my friend did it this way, I could do it that way. And it just makes them want to attempt doing the math more. So it's, it's, it's been a great turnaround to see kids access math that normally would sit back and think they couldn't.
Hogging the mic. I have my admin hat on tonight, so I forgot to put on my science hat for a second. I'm also part of the science curriculum, curriculum team and as a department, we're working on student trackers. So it's something that we've initiated over the past three years where at the beginning of the year, we work with the colleagues in the grades below us to understand sort of what the students are bringing to the table and what has happened from sixth and seventh grade to now. And we look at their achievement data on M C A S scores and all of that in order to know what students we should be focusing on and thinking about the strategies that we're using to provide interventions throughout the year and just keeping track of those and making sure that we collaborate as an entire department and not just across the eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade to make sure that we're helping those students succeed.
That's exciting, that's great.
And the science department really refined the process and it got adopted by the other departments as well. And they really keep track again of what strategies they've tried, whether they're working or not, should they replicate them, and the sharing of information. And then finally, I just want to highlight on this slide the, the work that actually has built on the amazing work under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan at the elementary level with Lectio and Dr. Noni LaSoe, who spent so far two and a half days with the English Language Arts Department through a curriculum, sort of taking stock in the data as well as the curriculum and the standards and really sort of reflecting on how are we getting, where do we want students to be, how are we getting them there, what kinds of resources, what kinds of supports, how consistent are practices across grade levels? And, and the work has been really thoughtful and we are excited about sort of next steps and continuing that work, again, building on the, the fine work that's been done at the elementary level. again, building on the, the fine work that's been done at the elementary level.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Ross Denny, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader and soon to be sixth grader. Goal number three is about an integrated approach to supporting the social-emotional needs, the social-emotional growth of all students in order to improve their social-emotional competence, as well as the school culture and climate. And I'm gonna briefly talk about the first strategy around positive behavioral interventions and supports. So last summer, several teachers from the Pierce Middle School, along with several elementary school teachers, attended training on implementing a PBIS plan within Pierce. And during the fall, teachers received professional development from their peers that participated in the training, and in January, launched a PBS program for the middle school by grade level. With that said, the campaign is focusing on good behavior in the hallways, and then we'll move on to how kids can better behave in the cafeteria. But essentially, they created a system to provide incentives for kids to demonstrate best practices. So the teachers were kind enough to put together a video of themselves behaving well and behaving poorly in the hallways, just so kids, it supports a PBIS tenant, which is kids aren't gonna know what to do, but if you show them and you demonstrate it, they can in fact do it. And for the students that are getting caught using some of those positive behaviors, they'll get a ticket. And once the teams ticket, because I guess the middle school, each grade level has three teams, once the team has filled their bucket, they earn prizes, such as extra time in the cafeteria. I would've asked for early recess, but apparently that wasn't on the table. With that said, there's also three teachers and three students that are put into a raffle. And when that team wins, those three students and three teachers that are selected also win a prize. So it's an extra incentive to encourage the kids to follow the good practices.
Hi, my name is Dana Jessup Turner, and I have three kids in the Milton Public Schools. I have a sixth grader here at Pierce, and I have boy-girl twins who are fourth graders at Collicott. And we couldn't be more thrilled to be part of the public school community. And I realize that we're about to become part of the Pierce Middle School community for the next five years. And so I was very pleased to be able to participate in site council. And just wanted to tell you quickly about a conversation we had in site council at our last meeting. And it was around that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. And I think it really speaks to the importance of supporting the social and emotional growth of our students as we think about that really challenging time for a lot of kids. And so becoming part of community as a parent and supporting our children and becoming part of a community led us to think about just the absolute wonderful range of opportunity for children at Pierce to become involved in different clubs. And how do kids know that those are available? How do parents know that those are available? And how do we create that sense of community by bringing our kids together, helping to support their interests? And so one of the exciting things about being on site council is not just to be able to talk about what-ifs, but to really start thinking about, "How can we do this?" And we came up with the possibility of not a career fair so much, but a club fair, where kids whom I know you're gonna hear from tonight can set up tables and make available to other kids the options that maybe as a rising sixth grader you wouldn't know about. My oldest is, this is our first experience at Pierce, and so we're getting to know it as a family. So just even thinking about those ideas and being part of a site council that's obviously so supportive, so committed, and part of a school that's so committed to the, supporting that social and emotional growth. And I'll just add very quickly that I attended the Parents' Speaker Series last night, which was, I, I can't say enough about the speaker series. Last night, the author of a great book entitled "The Gift of Failure: How the Best Parents Learn to Let Go So Their Children Can Succeed", she spoke at length about the concept of autonomy and the concept of autonomy as defined by giving children choice. And what an incredible opportunity at middle school level to have the choice, not only in the classrooms, but also through the after-school committee or the after-school activities. And so, like I said, very thrilled to be part of the site council, part of the school community, and looking forward to having the children behind us talk more about what those options are.
I will also add, just to give an update on the youth health survey. So we just completed, the high school gives the youth risk behavior survey, and the middle school gives the youth health survey. They are similar. And we just administered it to all of sixth grade and all of eighth grade. And our plan is to do that every two years, so we can get both some cohort data as well as some in-the-moment data. And so we're actually meeting next week, thanks to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Committee. Did I get all of the words in there? Excellent. And of course, the amazing Lori Stillman. And, and the grant money that they have has supported or is supporting folks to do the analysis of the data. And so we have our first meeting about that next week. So we're excited about that, because that has fueled and been the basis of many of the grants, actually, especially around safe and supportive schools and, and healthy relationships. The data that we've been able to get our hands on about behaviors and such has really fueled the funding for those, those initiatives. So at this time, I will ask the grownups to maybe return to the audience, and I'll ask the eighth, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can you talk about the attendance initiatives?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we have been reading a lot of the research, reflecting on and refining our attendance protocol and supports. And we, I have a student from the Harvard Graduate School of Education who has sort of taken this on as her, as her initiative. And so part of the work that she did was talking to, interviewing, sort of doing focus groups with each of the stakeholders who have a hand in attendance, from the administrative assistant, who's at the front desk, to the guidance counselors, to parents, to students. And really sort of understanding, not only sort of the logistics of the attendance process, and after how many do you call home, and after how many do you send a letter, but more importantly, the supportive structures. And how can we connect, if needed, how can we connect families with resources? How much do we, as a, as a school community, understand school anxiety, for example? And so really sort of taking stock in, in what we all understand about attendance, reading research, the latest research on, on what works. And then also, we've been piloting some, in sort of a case study form, supports for individual students and reflecting on the effectiveness of those, which, which include things like action planning with students. The guidance counselors have built up a nice protocol around that. Sort of checking in with students, understanding why the absence, you know, if a student is either chronically absent or approaching being chronically absent, really understanding the nature of why that's happening, and then putting appropriate supports and action planning into place so that it's, there are supportive structures. And then also self-reflecting as a school culture about sort of the reasons why children might not wanna come to school, aside from, you know, if it's something that we understand to be a school anxiety, but making sure we're keeping kids connected, making sure they have all of these activities, because sometimes those are the reasons why they come. And so we're, we're doing a lot of that work, too. Sure. So Eddie and Michael and Mallory and Emily and Hoku are going to come up. I don't.
Really?
I don't miss any of it.
No. Sometimes I miss four. Fourth grade, you mean?
No, four years old. So these are yet more amazing Pierce Middle School students. And so what I will do is just kind of pass the mic. They'll let you know what special initiatives and programs they're involved in here at Pierce, and just tell you a little bit about them.
Great.
Hi, I'm Emily King, and I'm an eighth-grade student here at Pierce Middle School. And I take part in three main clubs. I do the DOV, and I do jazz band, and I do math team. So DOV stands for Domestic Violence Ended. And I came in over the summer, and we did a program to talk about healthy relationships and like what you want to see in a relationship, and what are the healthy parts and what's unhealthy. And we try to spread that around the schools that people know for when they get into a relationship and how to make sure that yours is healthy. And I also do math team, and we meet after school on Thursdays. And we do different problems that have to do geometry, algebra, and different things like that. And we go to meets like, like, like once a month or twice a month, well, every two months. And we get to participate with other schools and do different math problems and learn more about different parts of math. And I also do the,
Jazz band.
Jazz band. Sorry. Oh, yeah. I was talking about that. I do jazz band, and we meet twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the morning at 7:15. And we play different pieces in jazz, and there's different instruments in our band, and I play the trumpet. And we also have concerts every once in a while, and yeah, it's really fun.
Great. Wow.
Hi, I'm Eddie. I'm a sixth grader here at Pierce Middle School. I am part of the Student Council. And recently, we hosted a peace march. So if everybody likes world peace, we wanted to march for it and show our passion for peace. And that's what we did, and we had a celebration. Each of us read a quote from a peacemaker, and then we all had lunch and went home.
Wow, that's great.
Hi, my name is Hoku, and I do chamber orchestra, Model UN, and Project 351 here at Pierce. So chamber is one of the amazing music curriculums that we have. We meet in the morning, and the four instruments that take part of the chamber orchestra are the violin, viola, cello, and bass. So we meet on either Thursday or Friday, depending on the week. And we are directed by Ms. Miller, who is our amazing strings director. And it's a lot of fun, and we get to kind of explore different types of music from different, like, eras. And we get to perform them at concerts. So that's a lot of fun. Model UN is a club that I've been doing for the past two years. Sorry. And it stands for Model United Nations. And so what we do is we get a country assignments, and we get to go to these, like, committees and represent these countries in real-world problems. And it's really amazing, because I've never knew about half the problems that I've had to represent. And I've learned a lot about countries, like, that I've never heard about and problems. Like, I represented the crisis in South Sudan once, which was really cool. And so we get to go, and we get to practice our negotiation and our public speaking, which are two very important qualities to have. And lastly, I do Project 351, which is a program that was started in, I believe, 2011. And it was started to get young students involved in everyday problems. So right now, we, Pierce is actually doing a clothing drive to Cradles to Crans in hopes to end child poverty. And we are trying to help these children who have to go to school with clothes that might not fit or that they're not very proud to wear, find clothing that they are proud and that gives them dignity to wear. So we are doing that clothing drive now through April 5th. So if anybody who's listening to this could donate, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mallory. I'm also part of DOV with Emily. And I'm also part of ADL. The program that we do at Pierce is called AWAD. It stands for World of Difference. So our mission is to inspire and teach the sixth graders at Pierce about diversity. So we go into the sixth grade classes about three times during the year. We're actually going in on Friday. And we do lessons with them. We meet after school on Tuesdays or Thursdays till 3:30. We come up with presentations. We also go through four training days during the year. It's so amazing, because we get to meet new people that have like the same kind of ideas as us. And we get to lead a lesson that's like really important to us as individuals. So it's really nice to see the sixth graders also hear and listen to the things that we teach them and kind of carry them out during the school year.
Great.
Hi, my name is Mike McDonald. I am a student at the Pierce Middle School in eighth grade. And I am here to talk about Pierce Pals, which is our type of best buddies. And so in Pierce Pals, what we do is make sure that the kids with disabilities and, you know, have trouble kind of talking to people and all that are really included in our school. It's not just after school when we have to do our fun activities. It's during the whole day, making sure everyone's having fun and enjoying. We do really fun activities, like going bowling. We do tie-dye shirts. Last year, we had a cool shirt that said Pierce Pals 2018 with a nice smiley face on it. And that's really cool. And, you know, every kid's like proud to wear it, outside of school, inside. And it really helps. One of my friends does have disabilities, and it was like one of my favorite parts to tell him, you know, "I'm part of school, and I do it." And he was really happy and started smiling, and it was really fun. Thank you.
And finally, I just wanna give a shout-out to the Gay Straight Alliance, first-ever at Pierce Middle School. And they, a for example of one of the things they've been working on, they have authored a letter that's called "We Wish You Knew". And it's a letter from children to grownups. And I'm not even going to try to quote it, because every time I read it, I'm brought to tears. So, but I will say, I will share it with you, and they've refined it. And the plan is to use it in some professional development with teachers and other grownups that work with children. Probably the most powerful piece I ever read. So just wanted to give them a shout-out. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like I've been to like a rock concert. Yeah. Well, you left, she was speechless. I mean, so, yeah. No, I'm just gonna say, from coming in, I got here, I got here early. I, traffic for some reason wasn't brutal coming from the city. And I, because I got here early, I was one of the early members to be serenaded with, you know, "Over the Rainbow" and another beautiful cultural piece after that. And then we had the dedication of the mosaic mural, and then the tour. And there was strings and jazz band and the fuse lab. And then we came here and had the site council, and, and just so much information. It's wonderful. I mean, I'm in, I, I'm a former PTO leadership member for, I don't know, three or four years here. But you are like notching it up, like, it looks like the old-fashioned days when I was here, you know? So congratulations to everyone, all the teachers, all the staff, all of you guys, all the, the voting initiative. It's just beyond impressive. I am speechless, and that's, you know, surprising for me, right? That's what I just said. Yeah, unbelievable. Yeah. As, as superintendent would say, "A-plus, plus." Well, speaking as a mom, I could just say your parents must be so proud of you guys. It's very impressive, yes.
It gives us confidence for the future. Really doing wonderful things at an early age. And hope you continue this work as you grow up. It's just wonderful, wonderful start here at Pierce. And thank you for all you're doing to make that happen.
I don't have anything else to add. I think you, the, the range of programs, academic and, and social-emotional and extracurricular, is phenomenal. I'd like to thank you and the Site Council and your leadership at Pierce. This is, this is a wonderful showcase of the community you have built. So, thank you.
Thank you. All of you. Yeah. Keep it up. Brilliant. I'm like, I'm exhausted. I can't even move a bit. Meeting now.
Very briefly, um, our happenings. If I might read something that was in the introduction of one of my last email blasts, which is better than well-thought-out from our office. It's with mixed emotions that I share that Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan- It's with mixed emotions that I share that Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan has announced her retirement effective June thirtieth of this year. I have known Janet since nineteen ninety-four when she joined the teaching staff at the Colicott Elementary School. After graduating from the Educational Leadership Program at Leslie University, she continued her career as a principal in the cohesive public schools. A decade later, we were thrilled to welcome her back to Milton, first as the principal of the Colicott Elementary School and later as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resources, a position she holds till today. Janet is the consummate professional. She has dedicated her career to Milton, in Milton, to improving the achievement and social emotional well-being of our students. Janet is uniquely qualified to lead preschool through grade twelve administrators, teachers, and staff in curriculum and professional development in a myriad of content areas. In the area of curriculum, one of her most recent and lasting accomplishments is leading a team of elementary staff over the past three years in the analysis of our English Language Odd Student Achievement Data. Subsequently, she facilitated examination of programs that led to the implementation of the National Geographic Reach for Reading Literacy Program for our kindergarten through grade five students. And as you heard, Dr. Spalding said, she's beginning, um, even announcing her retirement on an analysis of our middle school English program. Janet's breadth of knowledge and interpersonal skills have additionally benefited the Milton Public Schools as she oversees the professional development, budget, special education, Title IX, state assessment, grant program, and residency. Her six, her success in these areas ensures that teachers are given the tools they need to employ best practices across all grade levels. And the district operates in compliance with all federal, state, and local requirements. Professionally, the Milton Public Schools is stronger and more robust because of Janet Sheehan's contributions through her years of service and leadership. Personally, I will miss her humor, her kindness, her dedication, and her commitment. I'd like to ask the school committee and everyone here tonight to join me in wishing Janet Sheehan a happy and healthy retirement as she, uh, begins the next chapter of her life with her husband Jack, daughters Jennifer and Allison, son-in-law Mark, and two very special grandchildren that we hear about all the time.
Superintendent Gormley, thank you so very much, um, for that tribute. Um, was very generous. Thank you.
Not generous enough.
Very thoughtful. Um, I can't tell you how honored I am to have served the families and the students and the faculty and staff of the Milton Public Schools. Um, I am very, very thankful for this opportunity. Um, it has been truly a rewarding career here in Milton. And, uh, I could not have worked with a more committed, dedicated, and supportive leadership team and school committee. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Thanks to all.
So, reluctantly, we talk about, uh, we formed. And so, uh, in, on this search committee, uh, we have placed, uh, posted, um, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resource position. And, um, that's on School Spring. If anyone in the viewing audience, uh, wants to see the job posting or is interested in sharing, um, the information, we have formed, um, very briefly, an initial screening committee. I'll chair that committee with two school committee members, uh, a principal representative and administrative representative. I go to the head of the Teachers Union and ask for two teachers and one administrator. Um, I've gone to the PTO presidents to ask for a parent representative. Uh, Citizens for address Milton will send a representative. Uh, the CPAC, our Special Education, uh, Parent Advisory Council will send a representative. And it's very unique in the town of Milton that this group will receive every application that we re- that is received in the Milton Public Schools. In some school systems, they screen the applications and the superintendent will say, now go over these. We give, um, we brainstorm what we're looking for, uh, in the individual, uh, to fill this position. We come up with the questions together and we actually go through every single application and the committee decides who we're going to interview. And so, we do those interviews and then as a group, we put, um, candidates forward to a second screen committee. That will be made up of principals and school committee members. And we, um, go through the whole process again, interviewing that screened down group of applicants, candidates. And, um, for both rounds, obviously, they come for interviews. Uh, when appropriate, we do site visits. Obviously, when we get down to, uh, finalists, we do extensive, uh, uh, research and reference checks. And, um, sometimes, uh, we've gone and brought final candidates into the Milton Public Schools. So, you do site visits, um, to really, uh, see where these candidates have lived, where they have made a difference, where they have worked and thrived. And then you bring candidates into the Milton Public Schools. So, this has to be a match, uh, more than what's on a piece of paper. Um, is the candidate going to, as you heard about Janet Sheehan, who works twenty-four seven, um, is always there on, um, Saturdays and Sundays and every night if this is where, uh, the new Assistant Superintendent wants to make their life and contribute. So, we've, uh, begun that process. If any resident has a question, um, or a comment, uh, they're welcome to email me or, uh, call me at any time. Uh, does anyone have a question or a comment? I appreciate it. Um, again, you heard about the Pierce tonight. I was going, oh, excuse me.
Hold on just a second, I think.
Um, uh, you know, I, I don't know what I can add to what Mary really eloquently said, but, um, we're really gonna miss you, Janet, both personally and professionally. Um, uh, you are always there, always working on, you know, really tough si- tough issues and situations. And you do it with such, um, grace and professionalism and, um, and it's, it's gonna be a loss for the district. But we wish you well. We know you're gonna enjoy those grandkids and spending a lot more time with them. Um, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I just wanna echo it. I mean, she, you were my principal, um, at Colicott, uh, before you came up here. And I just feel like since you came, you know, been on a, my middle school, my Pierce journey when I was leadership and then school committee. But I'm gonna echo everything Elaine said. I mean, always there, committed. I mean, central, all three of you, you know. But, eh, but, um, you know, I, but I'm happy for your retirement and I'm glad you're gonna be able to have the next chapter with those lovely grandchildren. And wish you all the best, even though you'll be greatly, greatly missed. And I can't thank you enough for leading that arc of curriculum. And this, some of the staff members that you've brought in over the years have just been top notch. So, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm going to add that, um, we will miss you tremendously. The quiet, strong, forceful leadership that you have demonstrated, um, has been tremendous. Uh, as Superintendent said, your leadership with this, um, elementary reading program over the past few years has been phenomenal. And I was, I was incredibly impressed when, after looking at our data and sort of talking to the administration about it, the decision, where the decision was made, where this is what we're doing. This is the direction we're going in. And that's what's gonna happen. And s- school committee, you can figure out a way to do it. And I am, I am more than happy, uh, to do that. That was, that was tremendous leadership on your ha- on your, uh, part. And, um, a- and I hope that, um, I, I, I'm, I'm almost at a loss for words. I'm almost at a loss for words. Uh, I think that people don't realize the extent to, the amount, the sheer amount of work that you do and the, the debt that the Milton Public Schools has, uh, to, to you for making us the superlative system that we are. When you, you look at your title, you're, you're the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and for Human Resources. You, you are responsible for, for what we teach our pupils and who teaches them. And we have a top notch public school system. And that is thanks to your leadership in those roles. And our, our debt to you cannot be over, um, overstated. And I sincerely hope that you, you spend as much time as possible not here. Because you have, you have earned it.
That's funny.
In spades.
Speed dial.
Deeply touched.
Thank you.
It's all, it's all been teamwork, however. But thank you.
Uh, in a closing, uh, Jim and spoke to the elementary, um, literacy program. And, uh, Dr. Spalding referred to Dr. Noni LaSoe, who is the, um, uh, at the Harvard Graduate School. The dean of the Harvard Graduate School. And so, she was here last week and the team that Janet Sheehan, it's all about teamwork and relationships. And I look out at the Pierce people still here tonight. And, uh, she said, uh, Mary, um, you know, I've been doing this work. Um, I go across the country and the world and, uh, this team is just unbelievable. And that's driving, um, this curriculum and instruction. And Janet deserves the credit. Uh, briefly, I was going to, uh, say to the PS group, would you stay longer and talk about, um, close to my heart, uh, the Future Problem Solving Team, uh, placed, the PS team placed. Uh, they're going, I believe, this weekend, uh, to the state competition. And the topic is coping with stress. And, um, very briefly, I'll put out a blast tomorrow, but tomorrow night, um, I, I think, uh, Charlene Roach said there isn't a night open in the Milton Public Schools until the last night of June for an event. Um, and we apologize tomorrow night, there is a conflict. Uh, tomorrow night is the fifth grade information night here at Pierce. And it's also a high school, uh, curriculum, uh, information night for parents. So, we have a conflict tomorrow night and we work really hard, li- hard at not doing that. In closing, uh, a Milton Public School parent came forward and she's head of the organ donation program at one of the Boston hospitals. And she is, uh, sponsoring a night, April second, Tuesday night, Tuesday night? Um, this coming Tuesday night, it's going to be held here at Pierce beginning at six thirty. And, um, this, um, very gifted Milton Public School parent is bringing together, uh, a child who's been a recipient and a, uh, an adult. And we've gotten some very meaningful emails as a result of, uh, putting this in my email blast. And, uh, they're going to talk about what it means to be an o- organ donor and hear from the actual recipients. And, uh, this gifted parent, uh, really worked this into the parent series. So, if, um, if you're in the listening audience and, um, uh, this, you wanna hear more about, uh, the possibility of being an organ donor or just to be educated, um, about this, um, really amazing gift, uh, that one can give to another. Uh, six thirty on Tuesday night, right here in the Pierce auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Chair's report, I have, I have nothing to add that won't be covered in subcommittee reports. So, in the, um, interest of time, we can move forward. Uh, Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, um, I don't have a whole lot to say, uh, about, um, item A, the fiscal year twenty budget. Um, other than it has been, as you saw with the presentation earlier, um, it's been sent to the Warrant Committee. Um, I, we had to make cuts that we did not want to make, um, because such a high percentage of our budget is salaries. We ended up cutting, um, FTEs, full-time equivalents, uh, for teachers in the classroom. Uh, we didn't wanna do it. We never liked doing it. Um, but, uh, that's what it came down to. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, profusely thank Dr. Pavlicek for, um, helping us during those, uh, many months of trying to figure out, uh, what to cut, how to do it, um, how to, uh, work, uh, with the town side, uh, to make it happen and to, um, try to make those cuts as, um, painless as they possibly could be. Um, so, thank you very much. I also wanna thank, um, Betty White and, uh, Margaret Eberhard for all of their hard work on finance. Um, it gets really hairy, uh, from about November through January, February. And so, we had a lot of meetings and a lot of time uh, was spent on that, as well as, um, Dr. Donahue for, uh, making presentations to the Warrant Committee. It was definitely a group effort, um, all of this. And, um, I would also be remiss if I didn't thank, um, two members of the Select Board, in particular, Katie Conlin and Melinda Collins, who formed the Finance Subcommittee of the Select Board for working so well with us and so closely with us um, to help to make, um, make it all balance out, town side and school side. So, um, that was very important. So, thank you. And the only other item that I have is, um, the approval of, uh, vendor warrants. I'm gonna do them separately. Uh, first, I'd like to move to approve vendor warrant number thirty-seven dated March twenty-first, twenty nineteen in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Second, bro.
All right, um, all those in favor? All those abstaining? So, that's five to one, uh, zero, one. Um, and I'd like to move to approve vendor warrant number thirty-eight dated March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Okay, all, all those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Yes, please, Superintendent.
I'd like to recognize Dr. Craighead, uh, for chairing Finance Subcommittee and, uh, leading us in this process. And the process isn't over.
I know.
So, um.
I'm keenly aware of that.
And we really, um, working collaboratively, uh, this year with the Selectman's Finance Subcommittee and, uh, Town Administrator Dennehy and, um, other individuals at Town Hall. Uh, when the final budget comes out from the state, um, if there is increased funding, um, or any changes in any aspect of the budget, uh, we're continuing to work collaboratively with them so that when I'm approached about, uh, these cuts and reductions, um, you know, I am eternally optimistic that maybe increased funding, uh, before town meeting, uh, will, uh, come about. And we're able to, uh, Jim and Craighead asked for, at Tuesday's Finance Subcommittee, for us to bring a prioritized restoration list of the cuts. So, we're working with the leadership group, um, to, uh, again, when and if increased funding comes back to the town and the schools can, in response to the parents and to the leadership group and to the school committee, restore, um, any part of those positions that have been eliminated. Uh, that, that's, that's, uh, where we have our, uh, target and our.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll again express, since we're handing up, um, thanks, uh, thanks again to the, um, Finance Subcommittee of the School Committee. You know, w- we go to statewide conferences and things like that. We have facilitators come in and they, they talk to us about how we run our committee. And they are, they are shocked that we meet, that you meet weekly. And, um, i- it is the, the reason that we have such a, a, I think, good relationship with the Select Board and a, a, a good, a, a well-functioning, uh, finance process is because of all the time and effort that you put into mastering the subject and, um, paying attention to all the details. So, again, I'd like to thank you for your continued hard work on this. Thank you. Uh, and speaking of hard work, uh, the Facilities Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Um, yes, I just, um, would like to go through, um, what we've been doing, things, um, activities that we've, um, been doing and progress that we've made, um, as we're wrapping up our phase of the, um, school building project before it's. of the, um, school building project before it's, uh, taken over by the school building committee. Um, and we, um, uh, just, um, one of the things I hadn't on my list was our, um, joint meeting with the select board to discuss, um, this that just happened, uh, at our last meeting. Um, we, um, are in the process of seeking, uh, quotes on getting second opinions on, uh, enrollment projections. Um, that's been something that's been, um, asked about in a number of different, um, meetings that we've had. And, uh, we're looking into it, um, although, um, Superintendent Gormley, um, informed me that, that we were advised by, I think it was School Building Authority, that NESDEC, um, who has done our enrollment projections, um, that we've been working with so far, is really seen as the gold standard in Massachusetts. Um, but nevertheless, we, we feel it's, it's important, um, information that will guide, um, our school building project. And that, um, last fall, we talked about whether or not we would consider getting a second opinion. We decided to wait on that, but I think we've come to the conclusion that, that it's worth pursuing. So we will be doing that, um, as well as reaching out to the School Building Authority to, um, explore the process for, um, uh, getting on their list for, uh, funding, for school building, um, projects. And, uh, we'll, we'll be learning more about that in the coming weeks. We have had, uh, um, a thorough review of specialist spaces in the elementary schools um, that, um, Superintendent Gormley, um, and, and her team at Central Office has done with our, um, elementary principals input. And, um, it's been a, a helpful look at something that I've been asking for, um, to just get a sense of, um, how many, um, specialist activities are hap- happening, like how much music is actually taking place in music rooms, how much art is being done in art rooms, how much of those things are happening in classrooms, computer labs, um, those, those types of things. So we, we've gathered, um, that information and, um, I, I was personally pleased to see how much, um, we are still able to maintain our art and music program, in particular in art and music classrooms. Um, so, um, um, we'll, we'll be looking at that and, and along with the, um, um, all of the other elements that we're looking at to, um, pass on to the school building committee. Um, also at our last, uh, facilities advisory committee, we had, uh, Town Planner Bill Clark attend. Um, and he, um, this was a recommendation, uh, to us, um, from a number of places, but including from, uh, the Chair of the Planning Board Cheryl Taguas, who, who said, you really should talk to Bill Clark. And, and she was really right, he, he is an amazing wealth of information and resource, uh, to the town. He has so much history and so much knowledge about, uh, properties, um, around town and, and what's, what's, um, out there and what might be worth considering. And the school, the, uh, facilities advisory committee was, you know, particularly interested in finding out what, um, town properties there are that might be possibilities for, um, building a school, um, as well as any other, um, properties that might be in play. So, um, we had a, um, an excellent meeting with him and, um, um, it's a, a great first step and, and would certainly expect that he'll be, uh, very involved in, um, advising as the school building project proceeds. We're also at our, um, April tenth, uh, facilities meeting. We'll be, um, reviewing, um, and working on and reviewing, um, an analysis of operational costs of having, uh, of, um, two of the alternatives that we're looking at, two of the many alternatives that, that we're looking at, but, um, of a, a freestanding, um, K to five school, um, and versus an early childhood center as, as two of the possibilities. Um, and, um, that was something that, uh, the facilities advisory committee is particularly interested in. And I think the school committee will be also, that, that, that information will be just additional data for us to take into consideration, um, when we're reviewing all of the options. Um, and then, um, um, the, there is now a, the beginnings of a short-term plan for short-term options and, and, um, Superintendent Gormley has worked with her team, uh, to put together, uh, recommendations for us, um, of what, um, how we can, um, proceed in the, the next three to five years in terms of space and how much, um, uh, we are able to use existing, um, classrooms and, and spaces in the building. And Superintendent Gormley, I don't know if you.
Well, you know, we were going to discuss that tonight. Are you asking me to?
Yeah, yeah, please.
So, uh, we have, I didn't even get to speak to the chairman. We have, um, been working this week, uh, families signed up for their English or French choices. And we, uh, today sat down with our kindergarten numbers. And so, uh, we met for two or three hours with the elementary principals yesterday and again today. So if you don't mind, um, again, responding to the parents' choices and responding to where those kindergarteners live, uh, if you don't mind, on April tenth, we'll bring a presentation and we'll do out, um, the next five years. We'll explain the art and music, we'll explain, um, we're going to be using some teachers' rooms when we think we might have to put a classroom in the Cunningham Library. But up until five thirty tonight, uh, we were having discussions. So, um, the good news story is, uh, as I said today to another group, uh, the, we respond, uh, to the four thousand children in front of us. It's not the same. Four thousand children and they're not coming out of the same homes and, uh, the student body changes. So as of this afternoon, we have some, uh, difficult and hard decisions to make in the next week. So on the tenth, we'll do that presentation.
Yeah, and that.
And we'll be able to, uh, tell you more about, uh, the kindergarten classrooms, right, Dr. Pavlicek and Mrs. Sheehan?
Yes.
And the Fr- French and English choices.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. So, um, moving forward, um, so, so there's all that information that's in process. And we will be bringing all of those pieces to the school committee, um, as they're, um, available as they're, they've passed through facilities advisory committee, um, and, um, at our next, um, few meetings. And, um, uh, we will have an opportunity then to review the options that are on the table, um, uh, for, uh, long-term in particular, uh, both short-term and long-term though, with as much information as we can, um, in the time that we've, we've had. Um, I know there is some concern about, um, this, um, process being fast-tracked. Um, but I, I have to say, just looking at the use of our current buildings and our current enrollment and how our enrollment keeps continuing to grow, that there's an urgency here in what we need to do. And this has been in the works for a while, but it's, we're, we're trying to move it forward in a, um, productive and thoughtful manner. Um, and certainly there will be plenty of opportunity for input and feedback and along the way from, uh, folks who, who, um, want to share their thoughts and, um, look forward to that. It, it just makes what we do, um, that much better. One of the things that, um, that, um, kind of came out of our last conversations, um, at the, with our jo- joint meeting with the select board and, and then our, our, at our school committee meeting, that, um, I've been kind of working on, uh, a list of, um, elements to consider when evaluating the options before us. Um, and I think that will be helpful, like what, what we have done to date has been kind of a pros and cons of each. Um, and that's been important information and I think it's, it's informed a lot of our, um, thinking, um, about it. But there are other elements that I think we as a school committee should decide, what are the important things that we want to see, um, in our school buildings, um, moving forward? And, and, you know, in particular, what, what do we need in a, in a new school building project? Um, and I'll tell you some of the things on, on my list, and I'd love to get your thoughts of whether you think they, these things should be included or whether there are other things that, um, can or should be, um, included. Um, so one of the items is, uh, twenty-sixth classrooms, which was recommended by our, our architects, that, you know, given the enrollment projections, that there would be need for that. Another is, um, the notion of decompressing existing elementary school sites. Um, there's been a, a real concern about how dense and crowded, uh, our, our elementary schools are now. And that hopefully through this school building project, we would be able to give some breathing room and, and, uh, more space to our, our elementary schools and the wonderful things they do. Um, management of traffic, um, traffic concerns are, you know, an issue for the whole town. But I, I think with, with the school building project, um, it's, it's just as important, um, an issue as, as for any type of, um, building project or anything we do in town. Cost effectiveness, um, it's, was clearly, um, uh, an important factor that was discussed at town meeting. And I think it, it informs everything we do. Minimizing transitions, uh, for students. And, um, that's something that, that we can discuss, uh, whether we, um, think that is an important element for us to consider. Enabling children to walk to school. Um, another, um, something that we, we promote and is, is good, uh, for, for children's health and, and, uh, for lots of reasons. We'll, we'll see whether we can, um, achieve that, um, developmentally appropriate grade configurations. Um, and that's been part of our conversation up until now, um, about shifting grades from one building to the, to the next. Um, and then, uh, finally, site availability. And, um, uh, you know, that's clearly been part of our, our, um, conversation, uh, to date about, you know, property that's already owned by the Milton Public Schools and property that's owned by the town. And, um, how, um, easily, uh, we can move this forward, uh, in terms of, um, identifying a, 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 a site that might work for us. So those are, those are, that's sort of a tentative list. Um, but I'm just looking for feedback and looking for other ideas, uh, for any other elements that you think, um, might, uh, be included.
Um, when you talked about cost effectiveness, are you talking about the actual building of the building or the ongoing operating costs of the?
Well, both.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, I mean, that, that is partly why we're looking for an analysis of, of operating costs for, um, uh, some of our different options, but yeah.
Ada, I have a question. Um, i- is there any update, um, has, have you, um, on facilities heard anything from, um, or could you speak to, um, the moderator with actually putting together the school building, you know, the next steps on that? Because, um, when people, you know, not just, you know, the parent groups that were here tonight, but other people, like, I, I'm still fuzzy on, um, what we're going to, I mean, I know that we have vague language that we, that we had at town meeting to get it formed, but I still don't know what we're char- like, what we're charging them with. Um, and I'm still, and is there any idea of like, you know, is facilities going to maybe, on behalf of the school? Or I don't know, I don't know how that goes, does facilities do that? Or when is the deadline that we're going to give the, um, moderator to say when we'd like, like, the, the school building committee to be in, in place? Any update on that, you know what I mean?
Well, I'll, I'll pass that on to, um, Chair, Chairman Donahue, he's been in touch with the, um, town moderator.
Okay.
Uh, so as of last week, the moderator had, um, around half a dozen or so, um, reasonable, um, requests to be on the committee. Uh, I did not press him as to what his timeline was, um, in terms of forming it in its entirety, but it seems like we're, we're sort of approaching that, that point. To your question about what, what we're going to charge them with, well, I, I, I think that as, as we envision the process moving along in the next few weeks, we're going to look at a lot of the options that we've been presented and we're going to, I think, identify several reasonable ones and ask the building committee to further evaluate those and report back to us.
Mm-hmm.
And it will be an iterative cycle after they report back to us about, you know, sort of doing a deeper dive i- in those, on those options. Reevaluating the, the information that they have gathered and then sort of moving forward from there. You know, the, the, the school building committee is not going to build a school that we do not want.
So, so would the next steps be that we would, at school committee, regular school committee, vote on, I guess, the first j- set of charges that we're going to give the school building committee to do? And then they'll come back and update and then we'll move on from there?
I, I think we're, yeah, I think we're going to, I don't know about using the word charge because that.
Right.
But we're, we're definitely going to forward them a packet of information and, um, you know, identify where we are in the process and where, where the net, what we think the next steps are.
Okay.
Um, and when we would hope to hear back from them, um, with, with results on those next steps.
Okay. And then with regard, I was, I was glad to hear about the short-term, um, the, the short-term, um, movement and that, and that, um, Superintendent Gormley will, um, report out on that. Because I think it's important to know, you know, like in the next four to five, what, what, what the game plan is and what we can, what the, the parents can expect, because that, that's what they'll be hit with more, um, in the next couple of years than, than the building, yeah. Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And that, that we're making good progress on that. Um, it's a challenge, but, um, yeah, yeah. I, 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 I feel like we're, we'll be in a good place and, and have a, a good sense for, for us and for the community about how we might.
And, and just to reiterate you that that will still be managed by the facilities advisory committee and the school committee this short-term, um, planning and option.
Yeah, that won't, yeah, that won't be the school building.
Yeah, yeah, just so people know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Can you give me a sense, so, I'll just, I want to say one thing first, I want to thank Ada for all, all the work, everyone on the facilities, but particularly for having the, uh, for all of you, uh, to have the open forums and to present ideas that are not fully cooked to people.
Mm-hmm.
And put that out there and, and, and take those opportunities to educate people and get feedback. I know that it's not easy and sometimes that unsettles people, thinking that we've made decisions that we haven't made, that we've said things that, um, but as, as we said at the, at many of those, they're important and their concerns are really important to us because this is about the future of the town and for students. And so it takes, it takes a lot to put yourself out there and have those conversations. And so thank you, um, for, for doing that. Um, and then I just want a timeline for us as a, as a school committee as to, uh, you know, when are we going to have a conversation amongst ourselves as we discussed at the select board? We haven't had a conversation after all of the forums. Uh, when are we going to have a conversation as a school committee about that? Um, to alleviate some of the concerns that are popping up and, you know, especially the conversation from the select board about the four, four, four thing, which some people ask me about. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand a timeline.
Sure.
For that, from my view.
I, I think that's, that's an ex- that's an excellent segue.
Yeah.
So the plan right now is to have a, um, a robust, uh, formative discussion, uh, in our second meeting in April. I believe it's the. I believe it's the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
That, at that time, we will have, we will have, we have gotten, as you said, we've, we've presented the information that we have for the community. We've gotten a lot of, very frankly, very good feedback from the community. We've been able to sort of cycle that through the advisory, the facilities advisory committee, and they have, they have been able to do a lot more work, reaching out to Bill Clark, looking at some actual parcels of land in town and what things would, would look like. So I think, I think by that date, we will have enough information to have a conver- to have a solid conversation. I, I will not be here at our next meeting, the tenth, or we may have had it sooner, but I think this, this also gives the facilities advisory committee another, another meeting themselves to sort of tie up some loose ends.
Perfect, right.
Okay, great.
Right, right, so that's, that's the goal and the timeline and, and, yeah, yeah, that's, it's.
Thank you.
And since, since you bring it up, I, I think the, the, as you've mentioned, the four for four configuration is a very, it's an interesting, out of the box configuration, and I applaud those, those people who have come up with it. One of the, one of the major drawbacks to that would be that the field house would be located at the middle school. That the Copeland Field House, which is designed to be a centerpiece of a high school athletic experience, would be at a middle school. So that's, that's, that's something that I, I don't think we had an opportunity to, to articulate the last time it was brought up in public meeting, but it's, you bring it up again here, it's a, it's a good opportunity to mention that.
Yeah, I think, I, that was the feedback that I received from some people, that, that notion that our, our high school is really a hallmark of our community, the programming that we run, the opportunities for students to participate in extracurricular and sports activities, and the, and the building is designed for that. The biotech lab, the wooden auto shops, the field house, that, and that, you know, that, that came up in conversation, and I just sort of took it in as I took in everything else, not thinking that members of the community would be startled by that, but they were. And the idea that, that upheaval of what that would mean to, 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 to the high school, and that it, so buildings are not interchangeable. The high school is truly designed as an educational facility for students moving on to college. And that is what it is designed for, and that is the purpose of it, it, they are not interchangeable spaces. The middle school is designed for students that are in between, and the, and elementary schools are designed for students exploring the initial stages of learning, and that's part of a building process. It is not that you can, sometimes you can for reasons that you have to, but overall, the, if you want a quality school system, you're designing spaces for learning that are geared towards the ages that you're working with. So I was startled by that, people were startled by that, I guess, so.
Yeah, I, I need to know more about what that proposal is. I've heard it referred to, but I haven't heard any details about it. But I would say that the option of having the fifth grade move up to Pierce is the closest of the options that are on our list of doing a four, four, four type of break, of, of having K to four in the elementary schools and five to eight at, at middle school and nine to twelve. The motion of switching buildings just, yeah, it just makes no sense to me. And I, I don't know or understand where, where that one came from, but I'd, you know, be interested in hearing more about it to understand it better.
Yeah, I, I think, as I said, I think it's, it's, you know, we, I appreciate the members of the community and other boards helping with the, with the, the process of, of coming up with a solution. And it's very, it is a very creative solution, but it, it, you know, we, we did have DRA come in and, and look at our spaces, and I think if it were, if it were a relatively inexpensive fix-all, they, they probably would have suggested it to lead with, but.
Can I say, what, what was it again, K three?
I don't know, I don't, I maybe I misunderstood, I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't, when you say four, that it, four, four and four, what did, what did it mean again? I don't even know what it meant, really. I mean, it, something about, what, K, was it K three and then four, five, six? And then, I don't, I, I forget what it was. So I don't even, I, like you say, I, it wasn't a presentation, it wasn't whatever, I don't know what it means, yeah.
So for the, for those at home who may not have watched all the meetings, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, the idea was that you, you flipped the physical plans of the high school and the middle school, again, back to the future.
Yeah.
You bring the, you bring the fifth grade up to the middle school, and that, based on numbers, that, that larger population-wise campus could be better accommodated at the high school, so that the high, current high school campus would be.
So you have fifth through eighth?
Fifth through eighth, alright.
At Guile and then?
Yeah. And then, you know, it, it, the numbers.
It's not, it's, to echo Margaret, it's not about numbers, it's about the educational building and learning environment. They're not just wooden soldiers that we just can move over to, no, no way.
It, it would require a lot of work.
Uh, yeah, and their experience would be awful compared to what they have now, that we're so customized to that area, yeah.
But my, my apologies for taking us.
No, I did it.
Down the.
It wasn't you. It was me.
Down this tangent.
Yeah.
But I felt, I felt it was important to, to acknowledge the fact that the, through the generosity of the Copeland family, we, we have this tremendous asset at the high school, and it, it does, it does belong at the high school.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, so thank you, Chair Roseman. Anything else, or should we move on to policy?
No.
Okay, Policy Subcommittee.
Alright, so we had a great Policy Subcommittee meeting yesterday, and we will be having many policies coming your way. So we'll have to make room on our very busy agenda for some important policies. But the first thing I want to start this evening with, very short, we did, we reapproved our February, let me just look at the date quickly, I think it was the ninth, oh, sorry, no, our February twenty-seventh meeting, the, the homeschooling policy. If you recall, our homeschooling policy was brought to our attention by the, by Karen Cahill, the Chair of the Guidance Department, because there was something that needed to be changed, changed in the policy. And we changed those, we made those changes, and they were in reference to whether or not you're homeschooling, you could participate, graduate, get a diploma, participate in MCAS, when you had to submit plans by, if you were homeschooling your students, et cetera, and so forth. And we had a discussion about that, then we had a first reading, second reading, and then we voted on it. The oops, as we refer to it in preschool, was that in the, in the folder was, that night was an older version of the copy. So it, for, for technical purposes and for specific purposes, this is the correct version in the now folder, and we just want to reapprove it. There are, there have been no changes since those changes we discussed back in January. It's just that the wrong version of it was in the, in the packet that evening that goes into the public record. So we need to vote the proper packet that goes into the public record. So I would like to make a motion to reapprove policy IHBG homeschooling.
I'll second.
Would there be any further discussion about this policy?
I just want to add that with the superintendent's consent, I don't, I'm not sure if we need it, but we, we will invoke our expedited, uh, uh, policy approval process in the event that legal determines that it was, you know, we shouldn't have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Donahue. Okay, then all in favor of reapproving this policy? Is that everyone? Okay, you're on this. And I'd just like to say, I mean, Doc, Superintendent Gormly was sharing with me that, you know, even during a regular week, she gets inquiries about this, so it's an important policy for us to have. The other thing that's in your packet for your review is a bulleted list from Member Varela about the summary of the newly elected members. A member, we rea- we just reaffirmed our student advisory committee to the school committee policy, and we're going to activate that. And this is just the bulleted list that Member Varela gave to the advisors, to the students, advisory committee, student government. This is how it will work. So this is just a breakdown of it for them, the group of adults that are working with the students. It's not part of the policy, but it's a breakdown for your, for our understanding of the number of students and what grades they will be comprised of. So one freshman, one sophomore, two juniors?
Two seniors.
Two seniors, one junior, right, two, one, one, one. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
And can I, can I just say?
Yeah, yeah.
So the change, the changes, the reason why, you know, Dr. Donahue is, brought this up, which was good, is that, you know, right now, how it, it, it runs, you know, they have four offices, they have four offices and then two student reps at each grade level, and then the student reps end up either participating in the site council or they're supposed to, you know, come to every single school committee meeting, which is very daunting on their schedule, and a lot of them, you know, aren't able to come or show up or what have you. And then they also, you know, as, as student representatives, participate in their grade level, student government, which is a lot about fundraising, fundraising for, for prom, and then also community service work. And then the, and then they also do stuff for the, the, the school as a whole, like all four grade levels of student government. So thi- this is actually adding new members, so that, so the two seniors, I mean, they, they, there should be five members of this, so two seniors, a junior, a sophomore, and a freshman. And then amongst them, and so basically, like I said, that, that they will be committee to the school committee. And they're, they should participate in five school committees a year in the months of October, December, February, April, and June. And then, and amongst the five of them, they, they're going to have a chair and a co-chairman. So one of them has to be, I mean, they all can come if they want, but at least one needs to be at those five school committee meetings. And a, a week prior to the meeting, they can turn into the, to the superintendent and the chair of the school committee items, you know, that they want to discuss at school committee. If there's issues in the district from a student perspective, whatever, that can be put on those, a meeting in October, a meeting in December, January, April, blah, blah, blah. And, and then also that the school committee member will be a liaison to them to just, before they even come aboard, because I think that's been lacking, to explain to them what happens in school committee, kind of like those young women that were there, young ladies that were there tonight, explaining the purpose of school committee, what we do, what we're, what we're in charge of, what our responsibilities are, and what would be, you know, good things that they could bring to the agenda, to the table for concern. So it's kind of like fleshing it out a little bit, redefining it. It's also, I'm going to meet again with the two teachers who are the advisors. It also gives the student government more positions to be elected to and more kids that can help. You know, they can still participate on their own grade level, but they, they have this one specific responsibility that they have to work with and, and deal with. So I'm kind of excited that hopefully we'll get more interest from them to participate in school committee and also give, the teachers seem excited that it gives the student government some more opportunities for kids to run and, and, and work, work in government at the school level, so, yeah.
And then the other policy that we'll bring to your attention next time, and it will be in addition to our handbooks, is the review of the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. And we will be adding a sign-in, a sign-off sheet for parents to review and sign. Sort of informing parents about, you know, that there are a lot of online privacy issues and what their children are engaging in and what they're signing on with. And that, I can't remember, is it, is the consortium of online groups part of, like, is that, I can't remember what their name was. There's like a group of people, I don't remember, we, we discuss this, but that they're part of a consortium that they, they assure that they're following these privacy rights. So this is a really important compliance policy, form that we'll be putting into the handbooks, and I've already, we've already discussed with the administration that we will be asking A.J. Melson to come back. Remember we discussed last year about the digital citizenship curriculum? And we would like to hear more about, particularly in the younger grades, because in class, if students are putting their name and their age and, you know, where they go to school as they work there, I want them to understand that we have certain protections at school that prevent other things from getting in. But at home, if they're doing things, they have to understand that that's information that's available. So, you know, they're little. But anyway, this is a really important policy, and we will be reviewing this for approval coming up. Now that's it, the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and wellness.
I, I can't remember, did I update you on the, already on the January meeting? Because we had January and February, I, maybe I, I guess I did, but I didn't.
You did update us the last time, I think, you talked about, but you had two meetings since then, right?
Well, we had a January meeting and a February meeting, so I was gonna.
You deferred the last time.
So I, I haven't updated for January and February, right?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think you updated for January, but I don't recall February.
Alright, sorry, that's what I'm going to do for, and we have the March meeting. We have the March meeting on this Friday, actually, so. So, we, we spoke at our last February meeting about, I, I know I've spoken about it before, but what, what originally was labeled as the wait until eighth, eighth grade smartphone pledge. We've had some feedback that, that it would maybe be best to rethink a campaign for it. So in, in April, in April, the, uh, next month, MPS is having a speaker on this issue, and, and Noel Vigu is going to reach out to our communications coordinator, Stephanie O'Keefe, and recraft, maybe on, um, recrafting a message, because Holly Concannon, who's principal of Calicut and sits on the committee, you know, commented that a lot of the feedback she got from parents is that they don't like to be told that they should sign this pledge, and it, and they think that if they, if, if the district re, you know, re-crafts a campaign to educate the benefits of, of waiting, that they would, would be more successful to have more parents at the, at elementary level hold off until, until eighth grade. And so we'll have an update on it at the April meeting to where that's at.
May I add one thing, do you mind?
Okay.
Ironically, I think it was two years ago, a group of parents came to your school committee meeting about devices, and they started that wait until eight, and they were really a vocal group, so very timely. They got up on April eleventh, Catherine Stein, Adair, on kids and devices, and equal to the crowd of two hundred last night at the parent series. We hope to increase that number, and that was all initiated, the wait until eight and the speaker from that initial night that the parents came to the school committee meeting on children and using devices. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 no.
So that's April eleventh.
Yeah, Dr. Spalding also talked about a couple of changes. We, we, we wanted to talk about, you know, about additional, a possible additional, like we call it free time, or additional movement exercise that can happen during the day, so that kids are not just going from class to class to class, you know, with sort of no sort of social and emotional break, that they, that they are starting to implement at the elementary school. And Dr. Spalding spoke on some of the current changes up here, which she actually didn't speak to tonight, but that they, with regard to movement and exercise during the regular school day for Pierce. And she mentioned that they're currently have, they currently have several standing desks and exercise bikes in, in class, in some of the classrooms for classrooms to use. If kids need a break or redirection with regard to their movement, because, you know, instead of just sitting behind a desk all day long, so that they can kind of redirect, and she says that, that that has been successful. And James Jet also spoke about changes that are going to be made next year at the high school in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. The traditional student advisory period, which is a, a long block period that they have, will be shortened to a half an hour, because it's usually a long period. And additional advisory periods are going to be added to address other issues such as mental health, digital citizenship, maybe possible meditation, yoga, and things like that, like within the, the high school students' school day, to again, be able to bring in some, some social and emotional relief, like to the kind of grinding, you know, set of schedules that they have. They're having a wellness week run by the Student Leaders Association this month, and we'll have a report on that from the two leaders this Friday morning, an update, what happened, what they did. You've already been updated quite a bit on the Parents Speaker Series, the one last night, the gift of failure, the other one earlier in the month about remain calm, tips to feed your, your family healthy. But, you know, I, even from the feedback from parents tonight, that, you know, that they're, that that continues to go well, and the turnouts have been, have been fairly, fairly good, which is great. And then also Doc, Doc, Dr. Spalding, Superintendent Gormly spoke about, we had an update on the Calicut parent, which is she's an NP from children's, Laura O'Meala is her name, who's going to come and on April second. And she wants to start a campaign district-wide on the benefits of organ donation. So we'll have an update on the April. Um, so, we'll have an update on the April, um, the April meeting of how that goes and what the feedback is, so. Yeah.
Excellent.
Can I make a side comment?
Yeah.
Fills me with joy that Ada doesn't feel you with joy that all the techniques that we use in early childhood are just spreading themselves out across the spectrum.
Yeah.
Motor brakes.
Yeah.
Mindfulness.
Yeah. Social, emotional. I think it's great. Yeah. So.
Nice thing.
They need it.
Something to be sent for that.
Yeah.
It certainly is.
Thank you. Um, transportation and safety.
All right. I apologize for not printing out my minutes. I'm gonna be reading them from my phone. I didn't have time today.
Me too, I, I forgot mine, too, so I.
So, um, we had a meeting last Monday night, and Glenn had told me about an overcrowded busing situation at Cunningham, so I brought it up, and there was discussion about that. It seems to be mostly a problem when there's a half a day, or when their after-school program is not in session. Um, but there's a lot of, oh, an over-enrollment on that bus, and I said you were aware of it, and you were working on it. Um, Lee Thomas spoke about, um, proposed changes on Route one, one thirty-eight, and particularly focusing on the area near the Tucker School. Um, and I could tell you about the great plan, and it's really nice, I have a map of it. However, Randolph Avenue is the priority on Route twenty-eight, so, the, the improvements to the Tucker School neighborhood have been bumped to two thousand twenty-three. So, um, that's the plan. I'll, I'll give you a map of it, so you can see it for your records. Um, there was, uh, a continued discussion of the fact that the crosswalks at Tucker have still not been painted, despite phone calls into, um, Driscoll's, um, Rep. Driscoll's office. So, um, Libby Dumphy, who I tell her she should run the school committee someday, um, she's gonna get the PTO, uh, parents to kind of, um, email the governor's office, and Driscoll's office, and, uh, DCR to push for, um, those crosswalks to be done. She did comment that the Tucker neighborhood is the most walkable neighborhood for kids coming to school, so the crosswalks are vitally important. Um, and then we, we heard from the representative from the Cunningham parent, um, Brian, who is a retired, just recently retired state trooper. He talked about, again, that the congestion at, uh, drop-off and pickup continues. The additional crossing guard in the morning has been well and warmly received by the parents. However, he's concerned that the afternoon, it continues to be difficult and dismissal. Um, he did comment about Fuller's Lane in particular. I guess folks across are, you know, parking on both sides of that street. He says, at those times during, uh, when that happens, he worries that a safety vehicle, like a fire station truck, ambulance couldn't get down that road. Um, he says a lot of parents are trying to take a left turn out of Fuller onto Edge Hill, and that's really dangerous. Um, he also said that there's a lack of signage. He doesn't say that there's no school zone signing. He said over near Lawrence Row, there's, he thinks a, a school zone sign might be helpful, and some foot, signage in the streets that would tell people that pedestrians have the right to cross, and things like that, to buffer up the safety in that neighborhood. Um, and Vivian, who is the representative from Mass DOT, um, said that there's a, um, walk-to-school event planned for May first, and I think it's gonna be called Walk and Roll, so it's, um, probably bicycles as well. And she is waiting for a, um, she did offer, though, about the Cunningham issue. They have not had an observation. DOT hasn't had an observation over there since they reconfigured the crosswalk, so she said she'd be willing to go over and do one, and I thought that could be helpful. And she's also said that, um, she's waiting to hear back from the Glover PTO about the program that they talked about, the school, walking school bus proposal, which needs parent volunteers to walk a bunch of kids to, uh, school. And Libby Dumphy thought that Tucker School would be interested in that proposal, so they chatted after the meeting to be in touch. And we're meeting again April twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I chime in?
Please. Dr. Pavelchak.
From the Traffic Commission meeting earlier tonight, you mentioned the, uh, the crosswalks at Cunningham, and, uh, the recommendation to put the signage basically in the middle of the road, those flexible items. And we talked about it tonight, and DPW is going to go ahead and install those, so that's gonna be taken care of.
Great.
We also spent some time on the issues around Oak Street at Tucker School. Um, some of the neighbors have approached us. We've actually gone down and met with the neighbors, and they, we're at the Traffic Commission again tonight. Um, as you may recall, Oak Street was, is signed a do-not-enter from, uh, Blue Hill Parkway for certain hours a day. The neighbors were concerned that it was a long period of time, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. So, we're, in fact, shortening the period when it's, uh, do-not-enter to just really around entry and dismissal at Tucker. It's a forty-five-minute window in the morning, and a forty-five-minute window in the afternoon, so as to less inconvenience, um, some of the residents there. Um, they're also concerned about people during those times of parking on the Tucker side of the street, sometimes facing the wrong direction, and no parking zones. And so, we'll have some issues with enforcement and, and parking down there. But, to be fair, we've had that at all the schools. At all drop-off and dismissal time, uh, traffic i- is a concern. Um, and just two other pieces. Um, there have been issues with crossing guards are missing in the morning. They call in sick or something like that. And it's been, um, a little scattered as to how the schools get notified of it, because different schools have their starting times, and, you know, they call, and they find out that the crossing guard isn't gonna be there at seven o'clock in the morning, but the, uh, administrative assistants for the schools don't arrive until after that, if it's a later, uh, arrival. So, um, they, uh, the police ask for a, a simple, a single point of contact, um, to report those in the morning, which.
That'd be you.
That would be me.
That's right. Add that to the job description. Traffic monitor.
The only other thing I'll mention is.
Bus monitor.
Rachel Shuey, who's, uh, our Director of Transportation, and we're on a, a conference call this afternoon with, uh, First Student, the bus company. We are rolling out a phone app, which will allow parents to sign up and visibly track the school buses as it approaches in the morning or afternoons. They'll know where the buses are, what their estimated arrival time is, and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll enter the, slowly enter the twenty-first century, um, in terms of being able to tell, uh, where buses are, and be able to, uh, track that a little better.
In September.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna.
In September.
We're gonna roll it out, uh, on a test basis for, just to see if we can make it work this spring. Um, but we'll, uh, actually, hopefully wipe it clean and open it, uh, make it open to parents, uh, in general in September. Basically, all you have to do is say what school your child goes to, and what bus stop they're at, and people will basically track that bus for you, or those buses if you have multiple children. So, it's a, it seems like a fairly simple app, and let's, we will have to make sure it actually works.
What is it, like a GPS thing on the bus?
It is. The buses have GPS now.
Yeah, regardless, right?
We just, we can't see them. The bus company can see them. This will allow us an interface to the, uh, bus company's GPS system, so that any parent who signs up with the app will be able to see it.
A trial rollout, a trial rollout, but full implementation perhaps in September.
Administrative rollout and troubleshooting this spring.
Rachel, I will pretend to be parents.
So, Glenn, can you just help me with this? Because I think I, at last meeting, I, I wasn't really sure. Because if you were there, I would've been able to know, but I didn't. Um, can you just go over when do parents sign up if they're interested in having their child on the bus? What the current bus fees are? And I was, I misunderstood. I thought everyone paid a bus fee regardless of the age of the child or the, the distance from home, and that's incorrect. So, can you just clarify that? Thank you.
We will be doing sign-ups for next year, beginning May fifteenth.
Okay.
That's the date we're gonna be rolling out for next year. Everyone needs to sign up, even if you were on the bus this year, because some people's plans change. So, basically, everyone has to sign up. Children who are in kindergarten through grade six, who live more than two miles from their school, are eligible to ride for free.
Okay.
And children on free and reduced lunch are eligible to ride for free. But other than that, there's a bus fee. It's two se-, two hundred seventy-five dollars a year. We basically sell the remaining seats on a space-available basis, so it's first-come, first-served. Once we've satisfied the requirements for all those who we are required to, um, to transport, we will sell the remaining seats to those who option we may want to trans, have their children transported. Um, this was an issue particularly at the middle school and high school in East Milton this year. Um, middle school and high school buses seat fewer people, because the people are bigger. It's two to a seat, not three to a seat, the way it is at the elementary school. So, we have limited space. Um, the number of buses we run is really determined, frankly, by Cunningham and Callicott, who are the heaviest riders, Tucker and Glover. Because we, we need, have needed ten buses for those runs, and so we run ten buses. It's, and an eleventh bus under our current contract is seventy-one thousand dollars, which is considerable, and would not be made up by bus fees. So, um, we will look this spring, I mean, given the increasing enrollment, it is possible that if enough students live more than two miles from school in K-six, we might need an eleventh bus. I know currently we have overcrowding on a couple of, of buses. And we will be altering the routes for next year. There are certain, with, uh, geographic distribution of students. Uh, for instance, there is a bus for Cunningham, Callicott, that picks up the Gull, uh, the Gulliver, El, Wendell Park neighborhood, as well as Indian Cliffs. That won't happen. There are too many children in those neighborhoods. We're gonna have to split those onto different buses, and reconfigure routes a little bit, so that everyone fits.
So, Glenn.
But we'll know that once we get, know that better once we get the enrollment in the spring. And then we'll be able to, to work on routes in the summer, and then publish the routes in August.
Can you also, um, confirm that, um, just for the viewing audience, if anyone's watching, that, um, that, um, that they, that the ruling, that the ruling of, um, if you live beyond two miles from, from the school that you're going to attend only goes through sixth grade, and not seventh through twelfth? So, just people through.
Through six.
Yeah, just six, so, one year at Pierce, but for seventh and eighth. And then also, though, too, if those people that do live, um, you know, two miles or over, um, from, um, from the schools, but don't sign up, even though it would be free for them, but don't sign up, like, they could lose their spot.
They could.
So, they need to know that. Even though they don't have to pay for it, they still need to sign up and not say, but I live, you know, four point five miles from the school, and I shouldn't have to pay, but then we have to say there's no room on the bus. So, just so that they know that, that everyone has to sign up. It's just not everyone has to pay.
We'll be putting out all this out, um, actually shortly. Uh, Rachel Shuey, who's our Transportation Director, is rewriting some of the, um, memos that went out last year, so we can get started on this, and hopefully make it real clear as to what the procedures are. Um, but we do wanna get the, we do wanna have the sign-up open. May fifteenth through, uh, I think the end of June. That way, we'll be able to see what our ridership is. And then, anyone who wants to, uh, sign up after that, we'll put on hold until we determine routes, and then, you know, space-available basis beyond that, if anyone is late to the table.
Thank you. And thank you again to our, um, across-town, uh, thanks to the DPW, who, um, does, does a very good job controlling what they can control, um, and assisting us, so.
There's the mild understatement.
Thank you. Uh, all business, um, none, citizens speak topic response, none for this evening, possibly next meeting. Uh, next meeting agenda items. So, next meeting is the tenth. I will not, I will not be in attendance, I will be out of state. Um, we do have the superintendent's, uh, review. That information has been sent to us electronically. Um, I would like to, uh, complete the review by the subsequent meeting, the twenty-fourth. So, I think the tenth would provide an opportunity, if people would like additional information or something along that nature, to have a preliminary, um, discussion. But if you could get, um, feedback and, and comments to me, um, to the extent possible, as soon as possible, I will, I will try and craft a, um, a composite review for the twenty-fourth.
So, uh, Dr. Jones, I wanted to know, do you want those, um, from the forms that were sent out, do you want us to, like, fill in those PDF evaluations and just email them to you, so that you can just pull it from that?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and then, as I said, on the twenty-fourth, uh, I anticipate that the majority of the meeting will be taken up by discussion of our space needs and digesting some of the data, and, um, formulating some, um, thoughts on our behalf to hand off to the School Building Committee. Um, so, that's, that's my plan for the next few meetings. Uh, we'll have our, we may have truncated versions of our committee, um, report-outs, depending on levels of activity.
We'll, we'll need to bring some pol, we'll need to bring the, the privacy policy.
I would be worried.
Yeah, so, that, that needs to probably get, because it has to go in the handbooks.
Good. All right. Uh, and I imagine the handbooks, we'll be seeing the handbooks at some point in the next.
Yeah, that'll be like.
That'll be.
Down the road, but.
A few weeks.
An ongoing, year-long process, for the, for us, really.
Uh, citizens speak round two. There's nobody here. So, I'm gonna move to adjourn to executive session